Good evening and welcome to this board meeting for Tuesday, September 20th, 2022. Everybody could please stand for the Fledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Mr. Grigsby here.
Mrs. McCarthy.
Here.
Mrs. Saxon.
Here.
Mrs. Tamira.
Here.
Mr. Vaca.
Here.
Finalization of the agenda. Is there anything to add or delete?
The agenda is final. It's presented.
Thank you. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the written summary of the regular minutes for the meetings on August 2nd, 2022, and August 16th, 2022.
Well, second.
Moving by Ms. Tamira, second by Ms. McCarthy. Is there any discussion? Call call please. This is Tamira.
Yes.
This is McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Grigsby?
Yes.
Mrs. Saxon?
Yes.
Mr. Vaca?
Yes.
We'll move right into the Superintendent Chargers report.
We have a half report tonight, and first I would like to introduce Ms. Debbie Melda from Ohio School Board Association for some very special recognitions this evening.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Hello.
Debbie and Melda, and I'm here representing the Northeastern Regional Executive Committee for OSBA. And as we know, a lot of us have spent quite a few years on the Board of Education, Frank Vaca being one, with 15 years of service, and that's a lot of time.
I'm sorry.
That's all my Kelly. And secondly, we have Kelly with 10 years of service, which again is a long time. Congratulations.
Thank you.
We all know that it's not just one or two meetings a month. It's a lot of time at home, reading, investigating, and at the schools, trying to do the best for the kids. And I want to say how beautiful this school is, how impressive, and thank you all very much for your time and dedication. Remind you that it is the Northeastern's executive committee's 70th anniversary this year.
Wow.
October 5th is our Fall Conference where we celebrate that. It's in Lottsworth at the Galaxy. You can register on OSBA's website. We encourage, help us celebrate 70 wonderful years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Melda. On behalf of our team, our administrators, our teaching staff, all of our support staff, our students, we thank all of our board members for their service and the 25 collective years both Frank and Kelly have given to North Ridgeville City Schools. So we appreciate all of your very, thank you. And next, I would like to introduce Ms. Hostetler, who is going to recognize our September Employees of the Month.
Good evening, everybody.
Thought you were calling me up for not saying good evening.
On behalf of the Board of Education, it is my pleasure to congratulate two staff members for their selection as our NRCS September Staff Members of the Month. Each month, the Board of Education recognizes staff members who have shown extreme care, demonstrated excellence, and/or provided exemplary professionalism. These nominations may come from students, parents, colleagues, or administrators. This month's first award winner is Mrs. Amanda Pless. Mandy is joining us on Zoom this evening, and she is an auxiliary aide at Ranger High Tech Academy. Mrs. Pless was first hired in the district in August of 2021 at RHTA, where she continues to work for us there. Mandy was nominated by one of her colleagues who had this to say about her. Mandy is incredible in so many ways. She always has a positive upbeat attitude. She develops a personal relationship with each learner in the school community and is supportive and engaging with everyone. Mandy is flexible about her schedule and is an excellent communicator. She dives right in with behavior plans, data sheets, and any other task that is given to her. Mandy truly deserves recognition for all of her hard work and for being an amazing human, for being the amazing human that she is. Congratulations, Mandy, on your nomination and award, and thank you for your service to the North Ridgeville community. Our second employee this evening is Mr. Jeff Ditzler. Jeff is a first-grade teacher at Liberty Elementary. He was first hired in 2002 and began his career teaching first grade at Lear North Elementary. Mr. Ditzler was nominated by a parent who had this to say about him. This teacher goes above and beyond for his students. He worked tirelessly before school started to ensure his room was perfect before his students even stepped foot on day one, so that each felt happy and comfortable. He takes the time to communicate with parents in a way that no other teacher ever has for my kids. We get emails, dojos, and newsletters to keep us up to date about what they learn each week. He gives the students in his class the safe space to be themselves and learn in a way that caters to their specific needs while always celebrating and encouraging themselves and their classmates. My older son was in his class for first grade, and now I'm blessed to have him teaching my youngest son. My fifth grader still uses techniques he learned from Mr. Ditzler in first grade. There is a genuine magic in his classroom that teaches kids while engaging them and making them feel seen for who they are. He is a true asset to the North Ridgeville City Schools. What wonderful things to be said about a teacher. Congratulations, and thank you for your dedication to your. I would just like to take this opportunity to thank all of our parents, our staff members, and students who nominated staff members this past month and encourage you to continue to do so as your kind words are so important to share. It is a wonderful way to recognize the hard work of our staff and identify them as the positive leaders and role models that they are. Congratulations again to Mr. Ditzler and Mrs. Pless.
Next, I would like to introduce Dr. Miller, who is going to give us an update about the latest statewide, but also North Ridgeville School Report Card. Thank you. So, thank you guys for having me tonight. As you know, report cards were released on Thursday of last week. And then also in the plain dealer, you saw the official rankings of all of the districts across the region. So we're really excited where we landed. And it's really a testament to all the wonderful things that we have started here in the district. So I just wanted to give you an overview of what is in that report card. The main screen, if you look at that first page, let's look at this. This is the new face of the report card. So as you know, they completely changed the system. It's no longer going to be the As and Bs and that anymore. So now there are stars. These do not translate to As, Bs, and Bs, even though that would be an easy transition to kind of assume that's not actually what these are showing. They've also changed the calculation in many of these and the way that they're collecting that data and now showing the data. And as you can see at a glance, we're pretty proud of where we are right now. We still have some work to do in a few areas, but overall, it looks very good as we rebound from COVID. Excellent. So to go through each of these, I just wanted to kind of do a high-level overview of what you're seeing here. So the achievement, and as a district, we had four stars out of five in achievements. This is now looking at the PI-only score. So if you look at the next slide, remember, we had these in the past where we had to get to 80%. So this is still being reported, but it's no longer being calculated in those star scores. So we are still obviously working toward improving our achievement in each of these areas. But the only part that's now counting into our calculation is the next slide, which is the, I'm sorry, the performance index, which is a couple slides later. So these are showing the growth that we've experienced from one year to the next. And what you'll start to see, if you think about COVID being in that year 2020, so that's the year that we didn't have any students test, with the exception of third graders in the fall and then high schoolers in the winter. So there's a few data points in here that look like they're really low, but those are data points that are not showing the full story of the year. So we can kind of just ignore 2020 altogether. 2021, we know that students did test during that year, but it looked a little different again because they were hybrid. So now all students were here. Not all students were ready to take those assessments. We had many other things happening. So really, if you look from 2019 to 2022 and kind of draw a line across, you'll see that we've regained where we were almost in every single area. Some areas we've even gone up. So if you kind of like connect those dots, so if you were to look at that black dot in 2019 and like take it across to the black dot in 2022, that's showing that we are about at that same performance level in math that we were pre-COVID. So that's, you know, really addressing the learning gaps. So I put in these for each of those school years, so you can kind of see those at a glance. So Paul, if you can look at the next two grades. You can see here, fifth and sixth grade, we had tremendous growth in ELA in sixth grade. So we're really excited about that. Next two are showing seventh grade. Caveat here, we did change the way we tested seventh-grade math students this past year. So that's why it's looking like there's a significant dip. It's not really. It's because we moved the way kids were tested. So in seventh grade, our pre-algebra students that had previously taken the seventh-grade test, we bumped up to the eighth-grade test instead. So you're seeing what looks like a dip in our seventh-grade scores and a little bit of an increase than in our eighth-grade scores. It's just because we shifted students to more accurately reflect what they're actually learning in their classes. So that should be even out now. And then high school, and again, you can see that we are pretty close to pre-pandemic in most of our subjects. So we're really excited about that because it's really showing that the gaps that we experienced are starting to close. Okay, so this is showing the PI. So this is the part that is actually calculated in that first calculation. And so again, the performance index is looking at the number of students at each performance level. So we want them to all be at least proficient. If they're more than proficient, they're going to get bonus points. So that's how that is calculated, and you can see here that we had 18% of our students at advanced, an additional 1% at advanced plus, and then 20 additional percent at accomplished, and then 29 or 27.9% at proficient. So all of those together, then they take each of those areas, they multiply it. So the higher up you go, the more points you're earning. So that, you know, obviously, we want them to at least be proficient, but anyone who's scoring above proficient is going to get us additional points in this calculation. So that's how we got those four stars. So the next slide is looking at progress. And so this is what we call value-added, looking at that one lap around the track, making sure that no matter where our students are with their academic performance, they're at least growing a year's worth. And as you can see here, we got all five stars. So we're really proud of this. So even if our students are not meeting that academic achievement where we want them yet, we're still growing now. So if you look at that next slide, you can see they changed the colors, but the dark color is more than one year's growth by a significant amount. And you can see that almost the entire chart is that dark gray color. So that's really amazing. That's how we got those five stars. We are taking our kids wherever they come to us and growing them more than a year's worth of growth. And then those light gray areas were not tested. So when you consider that, it's pretty amazing chart. Okay, gap closing. So they changed the way that gap closing works a little bit too, and they took some of those other indicators and have dumped them into gap closing now. So this is looking at our student groups and looking at their achievement level compared to other student groups, so all students, and making sure that each group of students is making the appropriate growth and progress towards achievement. So we look at our EL students, for example, our students that are economically disadvantaged, those subgroups of students, and look at how they're doing compared to all other students. So if you go to the next slide here, those red dots are where they are supposed to be, and you'll see that we are exceeding those red dots in pretty much every area here. So again, we're doing really well, making sure that all students have access to that high-quality education here. So this is looking at English Language Arts and Math. Again, you can see here that red line is where it's expected. And then the next slide, this is showing graduation and then English learners. So this is the piece that's new to that measure, the chronic absenteeism. It was reported for this school year. It is not calculated yet, but it will be for next year. And you'll notice that it's a higher number than we would like to see, but you also have to remember that COVID is still playing into this data. Anytime a student was quarantined, they were out for a significant amount of time. And when we looked at this data, it was significantly higher than it was pre-COVID. So we're hoping that this is going to start to level back out. And the gifted, you'll also notice, is now appearing in this indicator, where it's previously, it had its own indicator. So it's now showing up in the gap closing case.
Is it chronic absence? Is that for all students?
Okay. It is for all students. Graduation. So again, we do have some areas that we want to continue to focus on and grow, and I would say that this is probably one of those areas. However, three is where expected growth is. So three is where we're supposed to be. Anything above a three is really amazing. So even though it's only a three out of the five stars, that is where we are supposed to be. Now, obviously, you know that we're going to continue to improve on that, but I just want you to know that threes are still very good. So. Okay, next slide shows our graduation rate. So you can see our four-year graduation rate, 89%, five-year, 92.4%. And again, if you remember to all of our previous conversations, this has been a moving target every single year since I've been here. So it continues to make it more and more difficult to make sure that all kids are meeting those requirements when they are changing literally by cohort. Early literacy, this is that piece that's looking at our students in K through three to see if they are at expected levels of achievement for reading and then looking to see again if they are meeting proficient or better by the time they reach third grade. So if you look at the next slide here, again, we have a three here. We were showing that we had 99 students moved on track. And then they take that and they divide it by the number of students that started off track. And so that's showing that students that were not on track in earlier years are starting to move to on-track status. So that's what we want to see. And then you can see on the right-hand side, what they've added in is the number of students that have met the requirements and then the number of students that scored proficient. So it's both, the number of students that met the requirement to move to fourth grade, and then also, we're looking to see how many of them met proficient. So they can advance to fourth grade multiple different ways. Last school year, because of COVID, there were some additional ways that students were able to advance to fourth grade. They didn't have to take and pass the alternative assessment. We think that that's coming back. We're waiting on legislation to see what's going to happen with that for this school year. And then college, career, workforce, and military readiness. This has now moved to a non-graded component. So this is an informational component only. And so none of this is actually rated, nor is it in our stars. But it is still really important. So if you look at the next slide, you can see all of the different areas that we are really starting to prepare our students for work and life after they leave us. And so some of the pieces in here are remediation free on parts of the ACT or SAT, the number of AP tests they're taking, IB tests, if they have college credits after they leave us, honor diplomas, industry credentials, which we are continuing to expand, and then anything with apprenticeship or any type of work-related activities. They're going to continue to expand this measure again for informational purposes. So we'll see more here in the coming years. So at a glance, then, that is our district as a whole with all of our buildings. Again, we're very pleased overall. The few areas where you're seeing ones, it's really because there's not as much data in those areas. So Liberty, for example, in gap closing, and the ECLC building at gap closing, they're only getting a mark for the gifted piece. And we don't test all students for gifted, nor do we serve all students for gifted. So it looks like, you know, the data's really not great in that area, but it's not. It's just not showing the whole picture, and a lot of that has to do with the configuration of the buildings. Lots of information, but again, we wanted to make sure that you've had at least a high-level understanding of where we are and how far we've come. Questions?
Dr. Miller, first of all, I always love the excitement you bring when you share data, especially when it shows growth for our students. You're always so excited about it. So that means a lot to us. The early literacy piece, we just rolled out new curriculum for that age band, correct? Then we should start seeing the results of that in future testing, correct?
We really should, yes.
Okay.
Very helpful.
So we've already taken prior year's data and already made adjustments to the benefit of our students.
Right. So we've added an additional assessment. We've been really proactive with the dyslexia law, and so we have a bunch of components in place for that. And yes, we are, we are still working with staff to implement the new curriculum and all of the additional components to make sure that we are meeting all students where they are.
And then the graduation. In the past, when we've asked this question, has it changed or is it still the same that we're required to track all incoming freshmen through graduation regardless of whether or not they graduate North Ridgeville City Schools? And it's easy to track them to the next school because we forward the transcripts, but anything beyond that, if we can't track, doesn't that count as a non-graduate? If we can't verify they graduated elsewhere, or has that changed?
I don't believe that has changed. Has anybody else answered that question?
So part of those numbers could be students that we just can't verify because they've moved out of district as to whether or not they graduated, and they consider them a non-graduate at that point for this purpose only, correct?
His potential.
So it's kind of deceiving when you look at that graduation number. It's not necessarily reflective of whether or not they're graduating from our buildings. It's just our ability to track all of those students that leave our buildings in conjunction to the students that in our case don't graduate from our schools. So it's kind of deceiving as to that graduation number, correct?
Yeah, and we are working still on additional pathways so that we can get more students across the stage in more creative ways. So I know Leon Brewster has really been instrumental in that, working with the high school staff, so. Thanks, Lee.
Awesome job. And I just want to remind the community, this is data. It's one point in time that we test our students. The growth, the progress, the gap closing, really, the fact is that we had five stars. We should be very proud of that because our administrative team and our staff makes adjustments based on these data points to meet the needs of our student and our commitment to meet each student where they're at and help them to grow over a year. We're clearly accomplishing that. So we have every reason to be very proud of this report card and what we're accomplishing because it's making a difference in those individual students' lives. But I just want to remind the community, this is one point in time, and it's data, that we utilize, our administrative team and staff does an amazing job of that utilizing that data to make a change, and then we see the benefits for, and our students down the road. So thank you again for your excitement and everything everybody does in regards to data.
Thank you. Okay, our final report this evening is our first daily report of the year coming out of the Early Childhood Learning Community. This is Vance.
Good evening, everyone.
Hello.
Thank you for this opportunity, for allowing me to share. I was afraid, I had to put my glasses on because I realized I could not see. So tonight, I have the privilege of just sharing and highlighting some, some great things that are going on at our building at the Early Childhood Learning Community. I'd like to first start off by saying that was a great segue from Dr. Miller's presentation because we truly did use that, that data from last year to drive our instruction and also change some of our procedures in order to improve our students' growth within our building. So I'd like to kind of talk about what those things are for this year. So the, we have a new screening process that we used, and based on that process, we had looked at some things from last year as far as how students were being placed in the classrooms. In the past, we would have students that would be screened at the start of the school year, and then those students would be placed into classrooms. We would have data, but we wouldn't necessarily, that data would be utilized, but it would take a little longer in order to implement title services or supports. This year, we decided to change that process where we were still going to be screening our students at the start of the school year, but actually using that real-time data to place students. So students were actually placed at the time when they came in for screening in August as opposed to being placed in classrooms in June. So it was great because we had that real-time data to be able to then equitably place students based on those scores from our KRA and also from our AIMS Web Star. And so I think it made a huge difference to be able to balance out our classrooms and really optimize the students in the classrooms to have a better understanding of where they were academically. The other thing that was, was new for our process for our, for the beginning of the year as after we screened all of the students, we made phone calls to all of our parents, which was new. So in the past, parents would find out in Power School who their teachers were, but because we were doing it so close to the start of the year, we utilized our days before the school year started for our kiddos and made personal phone calls, which I, I know we had a lot of feedback from parents that they were really excited to not only hear from their classroom teacher, but also just know that it was very welcoming for them as being new residents and for some of them, and then also just new to our building. So I think it was great to be able to build that rapport right off the bat with our parents. It helps with a lot of the aches that we normally see at the start of the year, as I'm sure you can imagine with any student that started school for the very first time. So the next slide just talks about, I want to dig in a little bit to our AIMS Web data. And as you can see in this chart, oh, you can go ahead. This chart here, it looks at our tier one, tier two, and tier three. This is where students scored with our AIMS Web at the start of the school year. So you can see for tier one, we had 87 students that were in that tier one, which is in the green. That's about 30% of our students. Tier two, we had 73 students, which is 25%, and then 129 who were in that tier three. I wanted to put these numbers in because this is where our students are coming to us. In comparison to our data that we had with students that were coming in from last year, we are noticing that trend with students. Again, Dr. Miller talked about the 2020 piece with COVID. We're noticing a lot of our kiddos did not have preschool like they have in the past. Were not in person if they did have preschool. And then obviously, we had the hybrid alternative for our, our school as well. So we are noticing that, that red is definitely at a higher number with the students where they're starting. And then based on that information, we were able to gather at the start of the year, we are going to be, we were able to introduce our title services much sooner this year based on being able to do that to support these numbers for the students. So where they're coming in, we know that there's going to be a need for them. So I'm actually excited just based on those services that we're providing and intervention groups that we have throughout the day for our students to be able to provide them with those supports because we know that those students that are coming in are getting to need those supports. And then you can go to the next slide. I also want to just talk about our units of study. Mr. Vaca had touched on the new programs that we've started, and units of study is one of those. So thank you very much to the board for that adoption. We really enjoy utilizing the units of study in our building, and our teachers are truly using it with fidelity. This picture, I actually had taken today of a student, and I know it's hard to see from your perspective, but this student is actually, there's a picture that's there, and they've labeled the picture, and there's a space on the bottom for writing. So about two years ago, this is something that you probably would not have seen in the building for students to be at the kindergarten level actually labeling a picture that they've drawn and for some of them, even, even being able to write sentences. And again, And again, we're only into September. So when we talk about making those adjustments from things that I've seen and the progress of using a curriculum and everyone is on the same page using that curriculum, we've seen already a ton of growth just within the writing and the reading for students. So we're super excited about that. This is just another picture. And again, I apologize that it's so small, but this one is of the students where they were actually writing, writing out their names and able to identify their names. And again, you saw the number of students and how they were coming in in the tier one, tier two, and tier three. But this is just again from instruction that we started from day one with the units of study with students and their practice. And I'm just really proud to be able to see the growth already just from using that consistently within our building. The other thing that we focused on a lot at the start of the year, which we did last year as well, was really focusing on the routines for students so that they were consistent with the format of units of study. So all of the students across the board are receiving the same instruction through our TBTs. We've identified and mapped out for the year when we are introducing topics, when those topics are going to close, and then when we're going to introduce a new skill. With the understanding, though, that we do have some students who have surpassed this. I have a student right now who is in our kindergarten program, reading at a sixth grade level. So with comprehension and sort of, you know, learning how to address that and also fit in our units of study is something too. So on both ends, you know, the struggling learners as well as those who are performing above average. So our intervention groups that we kind of talked about based on that tier three area of students that we have doesn't just encompass servicing those students that are struggling, but also those students that have, you know, surpassed this curriculum that we have just at kindergarten. We've also mapped out, which is not shown here, but our math concepts as well. So that's something that with our math curriculum, all of our teachers are consistently using, which again, I feel like has really been important. This year, we have mapped out from last year already the first three months going back to units of study. And then we identified based on our data last year that letter ID and phonics was going to be our big focus for the start of the year. So that's where we're going to spend a lot of our time with our students. And the next one. Yep. So for our hegemony, this is also something that we've adopted across the board for both our pre-K and K. So thank you to Dr. Miller for allowing us to have this wonderful program. It is a phonics-based program. So every day, our staff is implementing that phonemic awareness for students. They're working with them and really setting the stage and showing them how to use this consistently throughout the day. We still are working through with half-day. We still have three classrooms in our building that are half-day who are trying to manage the curriculum. And so we've been working with them. We actually met today to kind of talk through how to still have that curriculum fit in within that timeframe. What we're finding is and what we're working on is when students are transitioning to Liberty, what that looks like and looking at that data between our half-day and full-day and looking at how to support our students. So again, that I know as a district, that's something that we're working towards and looking at. And I know it's a passion of ours to make sure that we can have that universal kindergarten all day. But in the meantime, we are doing what we need to do to support our half-day teachers. So I just wanted to share just a little bit for preschool. They're a little bit different in regards to what they do as far as data. They are, all of their students were also screened using that same process. We just focused on screening our peers since we already had information on current students. But we are, all of our students are screened at the start of the year with an assessment called the CAAS. It's Child Outcome Summary is what it stands for. And it really just looks at where a student's entry is, so where their baseline data is. And then at the end of the year, we're able to actually use that data to see if growth has been made. So I know we talked a lot about growth within all of our grade levels. So we use that as well as the ELA to be able to assess students and then provide interventions for them. So this year with our OTEST 2.0, we've talked a lot about for preschool how we're going to focus on these two assessments to be able to show growth with our students, which will impact how, you know, how our teachers are adjusting and changing things within the curriculum. So the CAAS in ELA is something that we do every year. We do ELA three times during the school year. The CAAS is just the beginning of the year and end of the year. So that allows us to see like what growth they've made and have data for that. And Mr. Vaca, you talked about our curriculum as well for pre-K. This is our second year using pre-K on our way. So again, thank you to the board for that adoption. The teachers love it. It's aligned with our standards and it's just very easy to utilize with all the students. So again, having a curriculum that is across the board, something that everyone's able to use and support the kids has been really great. And then I just wanted to highlight really quickly our PBIS. We did receive Bronze Status this year, so we're very excited about that. For those of you who aren't aware, PBIS is a recognition system that focuses on behavior. It looks at the positive behavior versus highlighting those things that may be negative within the school. And then obviously, it aligns with creating a safe space and being supportive and prioritizing and looking at, you know, what are the things and expectations that we want to highlight throughout the year for our students? So if you go to the next slide, this is just a snippet of our matrix that we created. Thank you to Lee, again, get another shout out for helping with our school and sitting in on our meetings to assist us with our Bronze Status and really taking the concepts of all these different ideas that we have and wanting these expectations and really thinking about how to, how to narrow them down. So we have three things that we have as far as our students for expectations. And everybody's very clear on them and knows what those expectations are. I always say at the start of the year, it's like herding cats when kids are coming into the building. If you've never been to our building, you know and have helped. The students don't really know what their name is. They don't know how to walk down the hall. When you ask them to sit crisscross, all those things. So not only are we working on that classroom, but we really have set those expectations as you can see throughout the building. And I think it's been a fantastic start this year with the expectation set. I'm seeing very minimal behaviors, especially in comparison to what I saw at the start of the year from last year. And I think that concludes my part of my presentation.
Awesome, thank you. Any questions? Thank you. We'll move into hearing of the public. Now is your opportunity to address the Board of Education. Please approach the podium, sign in and state your name and address. Okay, stand down, we'll move right into the consent agenda. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda resolution as presented.
Second.
By Ms. Tamira, second by Ms. McCarthy. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please. Mrs. Tamira?
Yes.
Mrs. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Grigsby?
Yes.
Mrs. Saxon?
Yes.
Mr. Vaca?
Yes.
Finance audit report, Ms. McCarthy.
Thank you, Mr. Vaca. We have three items for consideration under the finance audit report. We have a resolution to approve the financial reports for August 2022. Next, we have a resolution for the fiscal year 2023 permanent appropriation. And finally, we have a resolution to amend the fiscal year 2023 certificate of estimated resources. I move to approve the finance audit items in one reading.
Second.
McCarthy, second by Ms. Tamira. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mrs. Tamira?
Yes.
Mr. Grigsby?
Yes.
Mrs. Saxon?
Yes.
Mr. Vaca?
Yes.
Human Resources Report, Mrs. Saxon?
We have a few items to consider under the Human Resources Report. Three support staff appointments, two non-NREA supplemental contracts, one support staff substitute contract, four certified staff adjustments, four support staff adjustments, one certified staff leave of absence, one support staff leave of absence. I move to approve the Human Resources Report in one reading.
Second.
Move by Ms. Saxon, second by Ms. McCarthy. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please. Mrs. Saxon?
Yes.
Mrs. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Grigsby?
Yes.
Mrs. Tamira?
Yes.
Mr. Vaca?
Yes.
Okay, it's recommended that the Board of Education enter into executive session to discuss the employment and evaluation of a public official.
Second.
Move by Ms. Tamira, second by Ms. Saxon. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Tamira?
Yes.
Mrs. Saxon?
Yes.
Yes, Mrs. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Vaca?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody. Enjoy the rest of your evening.